You're watching All About Alpena. All About Alpena is produced by Alpena Marketplace Productions, 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM daily. Visit us often on the web at www allaboutalpena.com. Once there, you can email us with your thoughts, concerns, questions, and of course we have our updated schedule there. Or feel free to call us at (354) 2295.
These days, current events unfold on a dozen channels. Headlines all seem to be shouting. And good news can be as scarce as a moment to relax. So let's turn down the noise this summer. Unplug just a little bit. And head to a shelter from the storms of life. The historic port city of Alpena. Located on the sunrise shore of Michigan. Only a few hours' drive, but miles away from the weight of the world. Nestled between a vast forest and an endless clear blue bay. Where the wonders of nature are as welcoming as the local hospitality. We can explore more than 200 shipwrecks in the largest freshwater sanctuary anywhere. Count the stairs to the top of a lighthouse. Or the masts that jet into the harbor sky at moonrise. Let's take a trip to the friendly picturesque city of Alpena. A haven from the world. That's pure Michigan. Your trip begins at michigan.org.
For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
I want to call Alpena Johnson to give you the order. And of course if you were, if we will start off first with a pledge of allegiance and um Matt, do you want to serve us up?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fernier?
Here.
Dwight?
Here.
Michely?
Here.
Diamond?
Here.
Doobie?
Here.
Dunkle?
We have an agenda and um this is a special meeting and so uh we will I need a motion to add the agenda as presented. I have no other changes.
Support.
I have a motion by Michely, support by Diamond. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Uh the only thing that we had on our agenda is a presentation for the City of Alpena. I think that's what the board basically said that they wanted to do and um as we all know that we have conflicts with our meetings because they're both held on the same night. Further one, because we only meet once a month and you also meet then so we would like to turn it over to the City and we can do what you need.
Okay, I'd like to do the same. Call the order of the City Council, special meeting please.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Paul Wora?
Here. And um our agenda is very similar to the townships. We shared our agenda before we arrived. Ours is a little bit more detailed obviously, but um but had the same points of interest. So if no one has any objections or modifications to the agenda, we'll approve. Yeah, like Marie said, our meetings conflict each other and I, we all agreed that this was a um a heavy enough topic and an important enough topic that we should share it together and um and discuss this thoroughly with each other rather than joining each other at uh at our other meetings. Our main objective is to, is to do what elected officials are elected to do and is to find a solution to, to the water and sewer rates and, and um that's what we're here for. The uh, in my perspective, we have an opportunity. These particular boards have an opportunity to make a huge difference and, and um a huge positive difference in how the rates are and, and what our relationship is with the township from here forward. So um our staff has put together a presentation for, for what we have called a unified system. We'd like to present that to the township. And basically our agenda just calls for the, that presentation which Rich is prepared to do. Rich and Greg certainly have a question and answer period between the boards. Certainly like our, the questions and answers to be, we don't have all the answers to all the questions that even I have. But uh, or council, or you, but just some, some discussion about the proposal and um and then we'll kind of go from there and see, see where that leads as far as how um how you receive the proposal and where you would like to go with the rest of the agenda from there. Matt, I don't want to be disrespectful, but I may have to leave before you finish your presentation and have class. So if I get up, it's not personal. I'm disagreeing with how you're presenting. Alright, thank you, Matt. I don't think it's tremendously long, but I'll basically turn it over to Greg.
Uh Rich and I are just going to run through the concept. I'm going to kind of give a little history of how we got to this. From the city perspective and the general outline, what Rich will present is basically looking at a potential rate structure. Of looking, was that even feasible, which is one of the things we did at first. Because if it came out in some ridiculous numbers, there was no reason to even pursue the option. If it didn't work for either party or neither of them. So he'll be running through that and he'll be doing that with a PowerPoint. What I'm doing is more just a verbal, hopefully fairly short. I kind of fell into this when I came onboard as interim uh city manager in May of, of 2012. It was shortly before that that the City Council at that time and the city manager had decided that the 35-year agreement, which had a date of termination of July, I'm not sure of the exact day, in July of 2012. And that the city considered the, at that point in time, that the agreement would be terminated. Obviously, that in itself has created its own disagreement between the two bodies. The city position is that the agreement no longer is in effect. Obviously, the township is, that it does continue. And, and we, I guess, accept to agree to disagree on that point. For me, it was, I didn't know whether I would be involved in any of this or not, but it became apparent that there was going to be, the time was going to be where I would have to be involved. I did in fact meet with Marie a few weeks after, probably not two or three weeks after I became interim to talk to her about a number of issues and this was one. And I just, my point was, I'm coming here where I can say I have no baggage because I've never been involved in any of these discussions. My upper position with the city did not have any, was not, I was not included in that. That was not within my realm of responsibilities and at the time I was very happy that it wasn't. But now that I am, I began to look at, and I saw things that were happening because my office was right outside council chambers. I would, meetings would be held. I would hear things in terms of talking with Rich or others. So you knew things were going on and that there was not always agreement. And the biggest thing that I began to see is that there was simply at times unhappiness on both parties in terms of the agreement. For us, it was probably pretty much that we weren't happy with some significant parts of the agreement itself. I think with the township and if I'm wrong, certainly correct me, was some of the implementation in the way how we interpreted some parts of the formula as compared to what the township. And this tend to always come to a head each year when we had true-ups. With uh, for what the end of the year, whether township owed us money or we owed the township money based upon how the formula went. And so I began to see was more of what I saw as us against them. Or us against you, you against us. And that it really became a political jurisdictional uh tension that, that existed there. And the one party that seemed to be lost in that on both sides was the rate payer or the user of the two, of the two utilities, the water and the sewer. So we began to have some internal discussions about if indeed, if the city's position is the agreement is not there, what are options to move forward and to have discussions with you, the township. Before we got too far with that, one thing that was decided was that what we needed for us was to do a rate study for our water and sewer. We hadn't had one done in what, 20?
20-plus years.
Excuse me, 20-plus years. So we wanted to have an outside expert, quote unquote, come in, look at our, our operations, our, our rates and determine whether they were in essence sustainable to sustain our system in terms of not only just operations and maintenance, but also replacement and upgrading the facility, the utilities. As is always the case with any such infrastructure. It must be maintained and upgraded over the years. This took a little bit of time and Marie and your board was gracious enough to allow us that time to go through that process. It was finally presented, I think in May of last year, to the council. And after there was some discussion on that, uh quite a bit regarding uh some of the numbers that were, were in there. It was felt that what we needed to do was move ahead with negotiations. How do you set rates overall if, if one of the primary users of the system, we don't have an agreement on, and that's being the township. So we did meet for the first time in July of, of last year. Prior to that, we sat down and at least put our options together, which we had three. And at our first meeting, we were asked what we were thinking in terms of moving ahead and beginning to talk about a new agreement. And we listed three options. A unified system or contracted services, basically where it would be operated as a single unit. Between the two. The other was a water sewer authority. And thirdly was to negotiate a new agreement. Similar or somewhat on the form of what, what had existed for the previous 35 years. At the time, we did indicate that our preference was a unified system. And we presented our, our reasons and we got into no details because we know in the end, the devil's always in the details. What we were trying to, at first just bring across is a concept. Basically is what we have now is one large system, but it is divided at a what is an artificial boundary, that is our boundary between the City of Alpena and the Township of Alpena. And at those points, whether it be water or sewer, there are meters to register flow either of water into the township or sewage out back into the city. I kind of liken them to small mini Berlin walls. They separate what is in essence one large system of operation. When we take those two systems and keep them separate, we lose efficiencies or economies of scale. And also we limit or eliminate the ability of treating all customers the same no matter where they are within this system. So basically, in a very simple nutshell, a unified system is that one, both entities retain ownership of their infrastructure. The city would continue to own the water treatment plant, the water recycling plant, and all of the distribution and collection system within its boundaries. And the township would likewise continue to own its system, everything within its boundary. The difference would be is that it would be operated as one entity by a common operator. Who, what we are proposing is that it would be United Water who presently operates ours and has for over a quarter of a century. So we have not operated our own system for, for that period of time. We do have input into the, of what is, how it's operated, since we do own the infrastructure. And likewise, if we had a unified system, you as a township would have to have input into it as well. Because you own the infrastructure, you have maintenance, upgrading issues, you have expansion issues and so forth. And those would all have to be worked at, united with the city that we partnered together in coming up with those plans and programs. But the operation would be by one entity. We'd also then have one billing rate. So as I've said before, it doesn't matter whether, if I, as a business or a resident lived across the street from our water treatment plant or it's six miles away at the far reaches of, of your township system. If we have the same size meter and use the same amount of water, you're going to pay the same bill because your rate is the same. Whatever that per thousand rate is, it is the same for everybody. If there are increases over time, everybody pays the same increase. There are no differences as, as a user. Everybody pays into the system the same way. Are there issues that would have to be resolved? Absolutely. This is nowhere near a done agree, uh done deal. There's nothing that could be presented to either bodies to say, here, approve or adopt this. Because what we haven't, all we've talked about is basically a shell. A basic framework of, of how it could work. But as I said, the devil's in the details and there are great many issues that would have to be resolved. We made a list of issues, both from our perspective as a city and then tried to look at your side, your position and say, what are issues? Marie brought up issues during the negotiating session that, that she brought up, uh two or three of them. Things such as, how do we expand systems within the city or within the township? How does that work? Because funding, we can't fund what's in the township, township can't fund what's in the city. So how do we do that? And when, if we have a unified system. There are things such as personnel and that certainly would, if, we have nobody who directly works for our water and sewer. That's contracted out, but you do. What have, how do, how are those, that's an issue that has to be discussed and resolved. The payment of bills, how is that here? Water tower maintenance. Each of us have water towers. How do we, how do we take care of that? How do we actually implement? Is it a contract between the city and the township? And then the city contracts the whole thing with United Water? Or is it done in some other fashion? Those are all details that need to be worked out. What we envisioned on our side as far as the process to see whether this would happen is if that concept seems like something that makes sense, then we have to begin to look at the details. And our thought on that was, we make a list of issues. You make a list of issues as a township. And then we exchange those basically to the attorneys who have been involved in the negotiations. And then let them sit down and begin to hammer out to see whether or not this can actually go from a concept to a reality. In terms of an agreement that both sides can look at, not say it's perfect, not, it doesn't meet. It's probably, the best word is fair, which means nobody's 100% happy. Because if one side is, probably the other side isn't. So we don't want that. Or something that is fair and can be signed and implemented. We had initially looked at something like a five-year agreement. What that at a three years, we would sit down and review it. See if, hey, this is working great, fine, we'll just continue on and we could, you know, when we get near the end of the five years, we renew it if everything's going well. If it, if it needs some adjustments, we got a couple of years to do that before it ends. And if for whatever reason, one party or the other says, we don't want to continue this, we then again have time to find another option, a solution, before it ends. And we're not suddenly scrambling that in five years and saying, what are we going to do? Because either the city or the township decided they didn't want to continue. Because that's in either party's best interest. So we, we wanted to be as flexible as we can. As, as, it's to make the agreement as flexible as it could be. The ultimately, it is really to let, the two gems, as I like to say, would be to take that, those issues. And I'm sure they're probably going to come up with additional ones that either we thought of in-house or that Marie or in the board would think of. That need to be included or at least discussed as part of a, an eventual agreement. And see if it can be worked out. If they went in the snags, they can go back, you know, they come back to the negotiating team. We put our input. Hopefully that may be helpful. But the goal would be to come to an agreement. If we find it just doesn't work, then at least we made that effort. And for me, it's, I think it behooves us, both of us, to make that effort. Because by doing so, we're putting the emphasis where I believe it belongs and that is on the customer. What is in their best interest? What allows them for, well, for the both utilities that we provide the most cost-effective, efficient and effective service to the customer. So that they are getting the best service they can for the, for the best, for the biggest bang for their buck in essence. That to me is what we should be looking at. And we feel this can do that. You know, is it perfect? Probably not. Are there going to be, you know, obstacles and that to overcome? Absolutely. But I think it can be overcome. I don't know if there's anything else anybody else wants to add on that before I turn it over to Rich. I'll turn it over to Rich. I'll hit those. He's going to go through basically what's more of the, the rate, a potential rate structure. This is nothing definitive or final. But it is taking the information the best we have. Marie provided a, quite a bit of financial information from the township. We then took information, of course, from our records and with the help of United Water and put this together. All that stuff is in here, right? Yes, that will be the same as that. So you can just follow along with that.
What we looked at was a potential rate structure. And the information that was presented at the October 8, 2013 negotiating session only outlined the potential rates to be charged to all customers of a unified system. There was no agreement in place. It was just, we had to find out if, if the rates would be feasible to even decide to move forward. So that's what that presentation was provided to in October 8. The memorandum which went along with that provided at that meeting detailed that there were many issues that would need to be worked out. But if both entities agreed in concept, the details could be worked out between the attorneys, as Greg had said. And again, the information that was provided by both Alpena Township and United Water was utilized to refine those rates and those have continuously been refined all the time. As late as even today, we were refining those. And the basis of the united or unified system is to provide the lowest rate possible to all customers, independent of where they live or do business. What does this rate structure look like? The spreadsheet was developed, which could incorporate all of the elements, charges, and follows the industry standard and accepted rate-making practice. These charges include a ready-to-serve charge, operation and maintenance charge for 1,000 gallons of usage, a debt service charge for 1,000 gallons of usage, billing service charge for bill issued, an infrastructure maintenance charge for 1,000 gallons of usage. Now, we've incorporated uh the information provided by the township, also provided by United Water into there so that the rate fee, rate structure that is, that is generated and is part of this presentation meets all of the debt, meets all the O and M charges, the operation and maintenance charges, and provides enough funding to cover those billings as issued, et cetera. I'm just going to briefly go to the spreadsheets. These things are detailed. A lot of information is on. But basically, we look at the total customers, both township and city. Ready-to-serve charge, our operation and maintenance charge, debt service charge, infrastructure maintenance charge, billing service charge, et cetera. And this is detailed further on. There's, there's a slide that, that shows this. But basically, at the end of the, at the end of the day, under this formula, there's just a little under $2 million available for cap for infrastructure maintenance dollars to maintain both the township and the city's system. These other spreadsheets also are outlined in, in the slides. I can go back to these if we need to do so. Just a, just a summary of the revenue and expenses. As I said, all, all the revenue generated by a unified system is $6,656,171. We have estimated expenses to operate and maintain the water system of $2,387,388,000. Estimated expenses for the sewer of $2,349,000. Total expenses of $4,736,502, which leaves available funding of $1.919 million. Plus, we also have additional revenue that comes into the plan of about $60,000. Thus, all said and done, we've got one, about $1.98 million available to maintain uh the system infrastructure that we have in place. Big, you know, and throughout this whole process, you know, Greg has hit on it, one of my slides stated it. When we looked at this, um at no time was it looked at, you know, how's this going to affect the city? Obviously it did. But you know, how, who's going to benefit the most? The city, township? The whole gist of this was to look at what the customer, the man paying, the entity paying the bill, what that customer was going to experience through this. Under this scenario, a residential customer, minimum bill, mom and pop, retired couple, uses minimal water. And we have a significant number of these within our, within the city system that you don't use 3,000 gallons a quarter. Their monthly bill would be $25.41, because we are going to a monthly billing system for our utility. Equivalent three-month bill would be $76.23. 10,000 gallon customer, more or less the average, they would have a monthly bill of about $52, or equivalent quarterly bill of about $156. And the large user, which I see, larger user, which I seem to fall into quite often, the 20,000 gallon consumption would have a monthly bill of $90, or about an equivalent bill of $270 per quarter. One thing we looked at was the township, where the average three-year volume billed by the township to their customers was 149,300. the township to their customers was 149,368,000 gallon units for water and 104,358,000 gallon units for sewer. We, billing volumes by the city are shown there, 304.5 and 295,000. So, the percentage that the township, you know, as far as billable flows, the township bills about 32.91% of all billable flows that generate revenue to both entities. For sewer, that's about 26.13% of total billable flows. Look at the township revenue, and the commodity, I've broken down the commodity charge because it does vary, that is based on the volume used, but then you have a ready-to-serve charge and a billing charge that are independent of the volumes. So that's why they're broken apart. But if you had township residents under this scenario, would generate about $1,953,439 out of the total revenue generated for the unified system of $6,656,171. They would generate about 29.35% of the total revenue. We go back pretty much in line with what the volumes, the billable volumes are. We look, just as a quick look at structural rate volumes, we've had 2010. You know, the city, the first true-ups are the cities. We've steadily increased our water and sewer rates up through 2013, 14. Right now, they're at $4.18 per thousand for water, $4.99 per thousand for sewer. Well, during that time, the township, the rates charged to the township by the city were $2.90, $2.90.6 cents for 1,000 gallons for water and $3.47.5 cents for 1,000 gallons for sewer. And then the township had their operational increases added to that. What we're looking at, when we look at just strictly the commodity charge, and this is strictly the commodity charge, again, billing and ready-to-serve charges would be standard and would be uniform across both entities. But the proposed rate that we've got per 1,000 gallons for water and sewer is $6.08 per thousand for water, $6.63 per 1,000 gallons for sewer. City residents who are presently at 4.18 and 4.99 would see about a 45.5% increase in their water rates, a 32.9% increase in their sewer rates. Flipping over to the township, right now, the township charges $6.92, and there's a plus there, because I know that there are some surcharges which, you know, I'm not privy to. And whether that is charged above the water or the sewer, I don't know, but I do know that there were some surcharges on the sewer. But even such, at the $6.08 per thousand that is proposed under this scenario, township customers would see about a 12.1% decrease in their rates for water and about a 7.8% decrease in their rates for sewer. And that is my presentation.
The only thing I would add on with this particular chart, with the township showing the decrease, obviously, once you add in the ready-to-serve charge and the billing charge, that's going to bring those up. They may be closer to zero, they may still be negative or slightly above, but they're going to be probably right in the range of what they are now. Again, don't know if what, if any other charges, you know, if you have a billing charge that you also add on, things of this sort, that's there now, I don't, we don't know. So we just tried to compare strictly the commodity charges, which would basically cover O and M, debt, and maintenance replacement.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Were true-ups a consideration in these numbers?
Those are the numbers that were, have been charged since.
And on a monthly billing, but there's also each, end of each year, there are true-ups done. And the true-ups end up sometimes being more, sometimes being less?
Since 2010, 11, there has not been a true-up. Those are the rates that have stayed consistent since that time. So, yeah, the township, there has been no true-ups in that timeframe to adjust those rates. Township has continued.
And was the last time that was, that happened?
Yeah, I think so. So, yeah, once those, whatever the last rates that were set and agreed upon, those have been consistent since.
Those are the ones that are.
Right. That have been charged to the township.
So now that that's been presented, I think I can speak for counsel in saying that our biggest goal at this point is to, is to walk away from this meeting with some type of mutual agreement on a direction for our team, if you will, to follow. Of course, all seven of you, eight of you, and all six of us aren't going to be meeting constantly to figure out the details of anything, whether it be the proposed unified system or anything else. So, but, but as a council, we would like to be comfortable with walking out of this meeting with some idea and agreement with you as to, number one, of course, is, do you see the proposal of the unified system in any way approachable for us to negotiate and answer questions and send our team off? And two, if not, then we can continue to discuss other avenues. And if you need more time, I can understand that, but, but we would like to walk away with some idea and some timeline to understand and benchmarks as far as, okay, where are we going to be two months from now? Where are we going to be two weeks from now? Just so we have an idea of where we're going with it. So, 12 months from now, we're not still trying to decide what we're going to do.
Can I ask a question? And I have that on my agenda, is that we were going to receive a brief overview of the proposed unified water sewer system, which you presented. During all of our negotiation process, there have been discussions that you were also, or that we were also going to look at whether we should form an authority or whether it made more sense to, and I'll put it pen as what Rich did that day, is tweak the current agreement. And, but the only thing that we've heard from the city is that you want to do a unified system.
Can I address that?
Sure.
Like I say, when we first met, you asked what our, what we had in mind, and we listed the three, and we said this was our preferred, and we gave our reasons at that point, basically what we said today. And at that time, we asked for some additional information, financial, to look at what a potential rate was, which we did get. Unfortunately, we were not able to meet before I went off on a length vacation, so, so we, yeah, so we came back and met in October, and we presented that, as to simply does a rate, is a rate structure there that could possibly work? And we also said at that time, you know, this is a potential rate, it seems to work. But the devil's in the detail in terms of things, and that's when we had asked for a list of issues that we would put together, which we have done those issues. And at least the feeling we had was that we were still looking at this particular option and to see whether or not it could be made to work or not. And the only way to do that was to list those issues and have both, basically, the attorneys take them and see if the framework of an agreement could be put in place or not. That did not happen. You know, you and I did meet in our own private meeting about, about the negotiations. And then we did receive in December the letter which said that you rejected that option. So, at least as far as, I think I can say for myself, I believe Jim would concur, if you don't disagree with me, that's not a problem, is that we felt that we were not being told, "No, that was not," and rather going on and looking at other options, it was, "Let's exhaust this." If you had said, "Nope, we don't want this" during those negotiations, "We're not interested," then we would have moved on.
But that isn't what happened. I mean, I took it to the board and explained, and I received a letter back from the mayor that basically, either I wasn't doing my job right, or our attorney wasn't, or our board didn't understand the way I explained it, and that's why we're here today. So that my board can hear firsthand from you the same thing that we went back and told them, that you are interested in a unified system, that is the only thing that we've been talked to about, and that that system has been designed by the city to look at. We had no input on that at all, and that's where we're at. Now, the board.
I would disagree in terms of the input, because, one, you provided us information on, somebody had to put together to determine whether a rate worked. We were willing to do that, we needed information. The second was, we did ask for, and then we, and then we asked for your set of issues since letting the attorneys negotiate or work out the framework. That did not happen.
If I can interrupt.
One thing that hasn't happened here is that if ever a detailed explanation from the city was to, what was wrong with that rate formula that was negotiated many years ago? It took about 85 years to negotiate it between the city and the township. We've heard that it's too difficult to understand. When that came along recently, all previous administrations understood how that rate formula worked. Rick Solinger understood how it worked. He said it was a good agreement. He said, "Oh, it is a little tweaking." Then something changed. All of a sudden, nobody understood it.
If I can interrupt just for a second, Penny asked if, no, you're all set? Okay, there was just some issues, but. And I just, I do want to keep the meeting structured to a certain extent. So, so let's go, if it's okay with you and your agenda, let's, we can go through, we can go through the other, the other options that are on the agenda, if you like.
Maybe I would like to ask my board members if there's any questions that they have on the presentation.
I would feel much more comfortable reconvening as a board after I've had a chance to look over this.
That's exactly what I suggested.
And I don't think we're going to come to any grand agreement at this, at this point. It's not that, it's just simply we need to digest what you've presented today.
It's my feeling, too.
I feel the same way.
I have, just so the boards are aware, I have scheduled a public hearing for our residents to be able to give input on February 3rd at 6:00 p.m., which is Monday afternoon.
I can certainly appreciate that.
Do you have something that you want to present on the Department of Authority?
My, my personal thoughts on the authority are that they, is that would be basically taking somewhat of the proposal and then just turning it over to an entity that doesn't involve any of us, to a certain extent, or a member. I'm not incredibly educated on authorities, but it's, but it kind of sounded like what we would be doing, but with just less control from both parties. Turning our entire system over to an authority where with this proposal, you continue to own your system, we continue to own our system, we have input with each other, and, and a mutual contract and agreement, so.
Do you mind Jim perhaps give a overview? He has probably the most knowledge regarding.
Certainly like to learn more, sure.
An authority is an option. An authority can be created as a separate legal entity, okay? One of the purposes of an authority is to take the politics out of the operation of water and sewer systems. And ideally have people appointed on the basis of interest and experience to help guide in decisions. Of course, the decision-making aspect, how decisions are made, and when you have different communities involved, of course, is a key, because the entity, the authority, has to make decisions that may or may not be popular in their respective communities. However, one of the advantages of an authority is that it is to look at everything, in a way, as a unified basis. Typically, ownership of the infrastructure is conveyed to the authority. And I believe that there was concern that the township or the city might not be interested in turning over ownership of the, their infrastructure to an authority. I can tell you that the unified system approach, I would consider it like an engagement, and if it worked, a logical next step would be to get married and form an authority, which I respectfully suggest objectively and as an outsider to the community and having done a lot of authorities, in the long run, I think is everybody's best interest. But there has to be the mutual trust between the different entities. We have to look at not political boundaries, but what's good for the community as a whole. And as we looked at the different options, it did seem it made sense to date for a while in the concept of a unified authority before somebody made the proposition of, "Let's have a formal authority." So in the long run, as a person that does intergovernmental agreements, I like the concept of an authority. But it does make sense to see if everyone can work together under the concept of a unified approach, and at the end of a fixed period of time review, and decide whether you would want to renew the agreement, or maybe we take the next step and we look at an authority, and then you deal with the tough issues. How do we, how do you make decisions? How many people are appointed by each entity? And then how do those folks make their, their decisions? And do the township board or the city council have to ratify any of those decisions? And I've seen lots of different approaches work. So, the unified system is a step toward an authority, but an authority is an option. It is a more complex option, but it is, it is doable. And of course, as Mr. Farb said, the other option is to look at, at your existing formula. I can tell you that I talked to the person that did the rate study, who believed that the rate formula, I just recall, one, one aspect, did not, from his perspective as a rate specialist, take into account the value of city-owned assets that, while technically depreciated, still had, in fact, functional and realistic value. And the agreement itself, from 1977, as a person that deals with contracts like this regularly, I would respectfully suggest, regardless of legal technicalities, whether it's still in effect or not, would need to be worked to be fair to both sides. So, so number one, you've got the authority, which I respectfully suggest is a very good long-term objective. Then you've got as another option, the unified approach that they've talked about here, and then the third option is trying to negotiate some type of a new contract and whether you've, you'd have to have it a new contract, some type of rate formula, whether it's based on the existing formula that expired during this past 2012, or some other type of approach. But those are the three realistic things. The one advantage of the unified approach, and why I didn't object to it too much, although I like authorities, is that it provides a period of the two communities working together, building a mutual trust. It puts the rate payers ahead of the political interests of the entities involved, and no one should take offense. But that's ultimately what an authority would want to do, is not look at political boundaries, but what's best for the people that ultimately pay. And so, I mean, those are the three options, and from my perspective, that's why I did not, as an outside legal consultant, fight them hard on not coming up with the authority approach, is that it made sense to try and establish an effective working relationship for a fixed period of time before one took that next step. So I hope that answered everybody's questions.
Just a comment, if I may. Jim mentioned keeping politics out of it. I've been involved, I put this on the tab, with township boards since 1983. Prior to that, one of my deceased partners. I see a long period of cooperation between the city and the township. As I understand, this came about as early as 1969. There was a greater Alpena Water and Sewer.
and Sewer Study, that was commissioned by the city and the township. I think it came about, and maybe, I don't know if Gene or Chris were around at that time. I was still a high school student at the time, so I don't know.
Yeah.
But anyway, at that time, I understand that the city needed some type of federal grant funds, and the granting agency suggested that. Yes, they yelled it before, that they wanted an area-wide water and sewer system, which fit right into what was happening in the township, because that's, I think, when the vast expansion into the township, the neighborhoods, into the township started. Then in the late 70s, I'm not sure what brought about the 1977 agreement. I think, again, it was probably the township was selling bonds to expand their system, and they needed a contract that was going to guarantee a supply of water and sewer services. We had a little bit of a dust-up in nineteen, early 1980s, and at that time, Joel Giller, my partner, said, why don't you go handle this meeting for me? And here I've been, ever since, handling this. And that's where we spent sort of five years negotiating this, this rate formula. And the last, I think the last joint meeting, the city and the township, their boards, was in 1987, when we came down to the last little piece to put into the formula, and established that formula. This worked out for four years by the city and the township. It was drafted by the city and the township. It was agreed to by the city and the township. There's been a lot of cooperation from the city and township over these past thirty, forty years.
Good.
Not a lot of politics.
Good.
I think maybe a question for Jim or Greg. The township understandably wants to take what we presented today and think about it, formulate your opinion. Would it be possible to get like a real basic bullet point information about an authority, just so they, we would all be working from the same place, and be able to look at that as well, or not?
Sure. I mean, you're talking about a bullet point of concepts that would be an authority, and we could do something for, for each, I mean, so they could compare the two. Sure, yeah, if they asked for it, that could be done. Yes, sir.
I'm going to have to excuse myself. Thank you for the presentation. I have a job to go do.
Sure you do.
And Sean understands perfectly, don't you?
Why I came in at the very last second.
Pardon me. If you have another public meeting, and you want to send your citizens here, most of whom don't hear too well, I hope you consider having microphones. I hope, I hope you're together, but whatever I'll learn, I'll learn in the face of my radio.
Sorry, I speak pretty loud, and I...
I heard you very well.
Yeah. I have a hearing problem also, so I understand.
I imagine the MT's got quite a bit of information on the course.
You're going there, so you know what you can do. Okay, we don't have anything else unless you have something.
Other than, I guess, number one, and I didn't mention it when I opened, was that I, that I am truly thankful that you showed up today, or you agreed at the meeting. I think it's, if nothing else, it gets us moving in the, in the right direction. It was good to sit down with everyone, and see you, and see us, and see what we had on the table. I would, I guess our goals have somewhat been met, as far as, as far as where we're going to go, to a certain extent. I'd like to, some type of timeline, I guess. If, you know, and, and I guess, from my perspective, they're listed on your agenda in, in my priority, as far as what I would like to see. Because I do think that the, that the unified system, whether it's ultimately completely different than what we've done, and I can appreciate what the governments and what the attorneys have done over the years, but ultimately, in the big picture, and the future, going forward, and for the, for what our residents expect, I do believe that the, that if the details of the unified system can be ironed out, I think that it's our best, that it's the best for all of us. With that said, if, in the event that it doesn't, and, and the authority does, then it makes more sense, because it's more, it's more structured, maybe, than the unified system is, or something, then that would be, certainly be my, my second opinion as priority. And then, lastly, of course, if modifications need to be made to the, to the current agreement as well. And I appreciate you taking that back, and taking the time to, to look it over, and will you, and so what you're going, what you're proposing is that you have, your next meeting is on the same day as our next meeting, if I, are we?
Right, February 3rd.
Oh, well, yeah, we have a meeting, we have one in between there, but you meet the first Monday of February, and we do as well. That's a meeting that you might, you might discuss this, and we, and then we would expect to hear back from you after that meeting.
I would suggest you and Marie keep in touch as to where everybody is at in this process.
Now, you're going to be in St. Kate's Island.
You blew her mind.
You blew my mind. I did have a question, though, but now I don't have it, it's gone. I'll think of it after I'm out of here, and then go, dang, I was supposed to ask one, but I wanted to. But, anyway, we, yeah, we will, after our board meeting, I want you to know when our board has decided. You'll probably be able to read it out of the newspaper before, or get on the internet and read it off of one of the newslines before I can call you, because your meetings last longer than mine. So... Oh, I know what I did want to ask before we adjourn to our side, is, do you believe that the letters that our attorney sent, and we've provided copies to your attorneys, that those will be addressed? And I made sure, I believe that, well, I gave a copy of them, too.
I had them. You mean, the one from March of 2012? Because I, I've had that. The only thing I didn't have was you gave all that, all the documentation with it, because there was supporting documentation.
Yeah, we can make sure you did.
Oh, we have that? Well, we, well, we have copies, we've had the letter.
That's all been provided to our attorneys.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah.
There's that letter, that letter in December, just this past December, that Joe said he would, he would work on this.
And I, you know, and like I said, I would just like to show, show our residents that we can, that we're not a government of years of negotiating whatever it is, and working it out. I mean, I would like to kind of keep things moving. If it's one option it is, if it's not, whatever option we end up with, I would just like to get there, not tomorrow, but, but, not next year, or at least a couple of months from now, at least, know...
Have some direction.
Know which direction we've chosen to go in, and, and start heading in that, in that direction. But otherwise, if, if everyone else is comfortable, I think before we close, it's on our agenda to accept public comment.
We can, though, make a motion to adjourn. So, a motion...
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Have a motion of support. Are those in favor? Signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed now? Motion carried.
Thank you, thank you, township. And I'll, unless, Greg, do you have anything else? I'll open it up to public comment, for anyone for the city of Elpina. If you do, please come up near one of the mics, and just state your name and address for our records.
It doesn't have to be a city resident.
Oh, it doesn't have to be a city resident. Well, what I meant was, you'd be addressing your name and address.
Yeah.
And being done. I think we've established our next steps and directions to a certain point.
Yes.